Good morning, the time is now nine thirty-four and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of November twelfth, two thousand nineteen is called to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Hearing none, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda and order of priority?
So moved.
Okay, moved by board member Ramos Montini, seconded by board member Pritchett. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. This time Marilyn will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Good morning, I'm Marilyn Schneider, I'm the State Board Executive. You've just been listening to the State Superintendent, Dr. Michael Rice. He also is Chairperson of the Board. To his left is Dr. Cassandra Albridge. She is the President of the Board, she is unable to attend today's Board meeting. And next to her you will see Dr. Pamela Q. She's from Saginaw, she's the Board's Vice President. Next to her Ms. Michelle Fecto from Detroit, the Board's Secretary. Ms. Nikki Snyder from Chelsea Dexter, from Dexter. And she's a member of the Board. And next to her Tiffany Tilly, she's the Board's NASB delegate, it's their association. Carol Lawheed is the Michigan Teacher of the Year, she's unable to attend today, the weather tripped her up a little bit. And across the table is Mr. Josh Nahart, and he's from the Governor's Office, who serves as an ex-official member of the Board. Dr. Judy Pritchett is next, from Washington Township, Board Member. Ms. Lupe Ramos Montini from Grand Rapids, Board Member. Next to me, Mr. Tom McMillan, the Board's Treasurer. He's on his way to us from Oakland Township, and he will be arriving shortly. Thank you.
Thank you Marilyn. Dr. Kenick Schneck, please begin the new employee introductions.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I am joined by two new employees within the Division of P twenty Systems and Student Transition. I'd like to introduce Terry Patterson. Terry is with us and works in the Office of Great Start in the Child Development Care Office. Terry, you want to tell us a little about yourself?
My name is Terry Patterson, I'm working in Child Development and Care in Great Start Equality, and I've been employed with the Department of Education for about six weeks or so.
Terry, thank you. Also like to introduce Toni Mallett. Toni also works in the Office of Great Start, she works within the Office of Early Childhood Development and Family Education. Toni, you want to share a few things?
I'm Toni Mallett, I'm from Grand Rapids, Michigan, I've been with Michigan Department of Education for about six years. Family Engagement Specialist for the Office of Great Start. And, alright, thank you.
Welcome.
Kyle Garant, if you would continue, sir.
My pleasure to introduce Brenda Swetman in our Office of Health and Nutrition Services. Brenda, can you tell a little about your recruitment department?
Hi, my name is Brenda Swetman, I'm a health and nutrition services professional in the National Department of Health and Nutrition. I am responsible for overseeing the health and nutrition of school districts that participate in the education.
Thank you.
Also I have the pleasure of introducing Penny Kentish-McWilliams, who is in the Office of Superintendent. Can you tell a little bit about yourself Penny?
Hi, I am the Senior Education Consultant, and I have the pleasure and opportunity to work in Genesee County with the Genesee County Schools and families that were impacted by the plant-led crisis. So I feel like I am home, I grew up in the community, during in the plant schools, I was elementary principal for several years, I was assistant superintendent in the area, I was the Board President for almost ten years for county school in that period. And I look forward to supporting those families in.
Do we miss any new employees in the room? Okay, thank you very, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Sandra, I would like to give a quick.
Okay, thank you very much, welcome. And do we have others? Any others? No, okay, thank you very much. If you plan to offer public comment today, please complete a form and get it to Marilyn. Forms are available on the table just outside the Boardroom, and they must be submitted prior to the beginning of the portion of the meeting devoted to public comment. Public comment will begin immediately following the lunch break, scheduled for approximately one PM today. Please be here at that time to make sure you have an opportunity to comment. First item on today's committee of the whole agenda is our presentation by students and staff of the Early College Program at the Lansing Community College. The Early College is a collaboration between Ingham Intermediate School District and Lansing Community College. The Early College is a program for students entering their junior year of high school who are looking for an opportunity to move into a college environment. We welcome students and staff from the Early College Program who will share more information. Lending support from the audience are Mr. Jason Melama, Superintendent of Ingham Intermediate School District, and Ms. Mickey O'Neil, Chief Communications Officer for Ingham ISD and Eaton Regional Education Service Agency. Dr. Kenick Schneck, will you begin the introductions?
I will, thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you to the State Board of Ed for allowing some students and staff from the, our Early College at Lansing Community College to join us this morning. As we've heard, Dr. Rice is very committed to involving students in our Board meetings, and so we have some students here to talk about a very innovative program that's not too far down the road, called the Early College at Lansing Community College. With that, I'm going to introduce Dr. Steve Rosales, and Steve is going to take it from there.
Good morning, I'm Dr. Steve Rosales, I'm the Director of the Early College at Lansing Community College. Thank you for inviting us to share the success of our program. Matt Booby and Tony Greenberg are here with four of our students to give you an overview and to hear from a student perspective of how the program is benefiting their future. I now turn it over to Matt and Tony.
Hi, my name's Matt Booby, I teach and I mentor, I teach social studies and I mentor these students at the Early College. Again, thank you for having us here today.
Tony Greenberg, I'm the English teacher, also a mentor at the Early College, and I'll get started with an overview of who we are and what we're all about. We exist as a shared educational entity, as you heard, between Ingham Intermediate and Lansing Community College. The second bullet there is a huge part of what we are and what we do. We're located on the main campus of Lansing Community College, and we think that the power of the site is very important, that we place the students on the college campus. I mean, that has a, that has a big impact on them. Seventeen participating schools and districts, primarily in Ingham County. We are one of twenty early-middle college high schools in the state, you know, there are one hundred and forty-two additional early-middle college programs, but we are one of twenty high schools of that sort, and we do belong to the State Association of Middle and Early Colleges. And we're in our ninth year of operation, having started in two thousand and eleven.
So our model is not like every model in the state. We take students after their tenth grade year. They come to us through a public lottery process from our local school districts, and they stay with us for grades eleven, twelve, and then that thirteenth year. Like other early colleges nationwide in this state, we do target the lottery process towards getting first-generation and low-income students access and helping them have success in college.
Yeah, we reserve a third of our seats in the lottery process for that group in particular. So what do we do? In three years we move students from high school to a college credential. So we have a college and career readiness, we approach, right, that language everybody uses, but what do we do? We have, we have soft skills that we teach the students, we call it success skills. We have a college and career readiness curriculum that includes, you know, exposing students to industry, to various jobs, to panels of professionals that come in, a variety of things that we do with college visits. We teach them college knowledge, what it means to go to college, and what's required of them. Obviously, we're teaching them the Michigan merit curriculum, the high school content, and then the mentoring, that's something that lasts all three years, right? So we're connected to them for three years with the same instructor, and that, that's a huge piece of what we do, and we'll talk more about that in a bit.
Probably the backbone of what we do to help students get ready for college and career is what we call success skills. You'll hear people usually call them soft skills, we kind of coined the term success skills, because they're going to help students be successful. And we do this through explicit instruction. In my social studies class, in Tony's English class, in our math and science classes, we give up time of instruction to explicitly teach about these skills that we know students need. We do this through activities, discussions, videos, and I think the biggest one that students are asked to do, kind of for the first time, is a self-reflection. Reflecting on who they are as a student, and what their strengths are, and where they need to improve. And some of the success skills that we specifically talk about are on the Board, they're like attendance. And for us, it's more than just showing up, though showing up's a great first step, it's about how do you be mentally present in class, how do you take good notes, and teaching students those skills explicitly. And communication, teaching students how to communicate appropriately in class, through writing, with us as instructors, with their eventual college professors, and probably the biggest one on there is time management. We know that when students go from high school to college, like, the biggest issue we see is time management. So we talk a lot about time management, both, both in the first semester, and in the second semester, and throughout the second and third years, and that guides a lot of our mentoring that we do. And the success skills becomes kind of this, this language that we use throughout those three years with our students.
Which, which brings us to mentoring again, I mean, that, the success skills we keep circling back to, right? It guides the language of what we do, and so part of, part of mentoring is helping students continue to implement those, those things while they're in college classes. Each student is assigned to one of four instructors at the very beginning of their time with us, and we meet with them one-on-one, from that very first semester all the way to the end. We teach them, you know, we help them in their academic skills, personal issues come up, time management comes up, we're looking at their planners, teaching them how to use, how to use one appropriately. Helping them navigate this whole process, everything from the transition out of T E C to what will come next, whether it's the world of work, or moving on to, you know, another university. We serve as an accountability piece for them, you know, various struggles they encounter along the way, it's a way for them to stay connected to T E C as they're out there as an individual at that point. We provide external motivation for them, we help them find internal motivation, and it's one of the things that at the end of our program, their families and their students will say, it's the mentoring that, besides the free credits, which they enjoy, the mentoring was a huge part of what made them successful at the end of T E C.
We exist for student success, there's a picture from one of our graduating classes, at the end of this year we have a convocation, and this is usually the day before L C C's graduation, so if you see, they have medallions on, and at L C C graduation, the next night or two nights later, they get to wear these medallions. Graduation at L C C is a really cool event for us, we make up less than three percent of L C C's population, but in any given year, we usually have about twenty percent of L C C's Associate of Science degrees. I think it was twenty-eight percent last year, in fact, so our students are having great success, and we're just here supporting and celebrating their success. And of course, we're always reflective on what we do, continue to try to get better, and so, you know, over the last five years, our, our college course pass rate just keeps getting better. So you've heard from us, you're going to hear from the students in just a second. We thought a parent voice would be appropriate as well, so this is a short video that gives a parent perspective as well. Fingers crossed it works.
Maybe. Or, or not.
Or not.
Acknowledge.
Let's leave it.
Okay, with that.
Let's move to Brooke. Yes, Kate. I can tell you, that parent was really excited that his student was, I've seen this video a lot, a lot of times, that, that parent in particular is very excited that his student was no longer in the basement playing video games, and was actually goal-setting. And another stu, or another parent we have on the video was really excited that her student was doing a lot of college and career planning, and just really excited about the students' planning, you know, years, years in their future with us.
Figure word for.
Yep. I promise, promise, that's what they say. And it's not, it's not going anywhere.
Or stuck.
Yep. Alright, so, we have four students with us. We have a third-year student here, Brooke Hill. So Brooke, would you, you know, tell us, tell them about you and your success?
Hello, my name is Brooke Hill, I'm from Eaton Rapids, I'm a third-year student here, and I'm studying chemical engineering. This program has been so beneficial for me. It didn't only prepare me for school and college, it prepared me in life, it prepared me for getting my job, buying my car, all that kind of stuff. The mentoring has been very beneficial to me, it helps me make sure I know that I'm on the right track and I'm doing what I should be doing. It's been very, the beginning was very rough from the start, and it helped me grow a lot faster than I thought I would, I matured probably five or ten years.
I think he's more goal-oriented, I mean, he's really, he's asking, you know, he would just basically go to school and day-to-day, he really didn't have any plans, but now he actually makes a schedule, and this I have to take.
Sorry Brooke.
I matured probably five or ten years in the three years that I've been here, and I feel like being on the college campus has helped with that, and just having more responsibility put on myself.
Hello everyone, my name's Elijah Fink, hope everyone's having a good morning so far. I'm a part of the EC seventeen cohort, and I'm studying engineering and design, and I feel that T E C has definitely prepared me, like Brooke said, it's matured me way faster than I feel like I would have without it. I was able to acquire a lot of the soft skills that T E C implements, and I feel like it's helped me, put me in the place that I am today. Mentoring was also a big part of it for me, even though I might not have always been there, whenever I did, I was able to get a good one-on-one with my mentor, and that definitely helped me put me in the right mind space to continue moving forward. I just finished an internship with a 3D printing company called EOS North America, and got certified for using those 3D printers. And then I also continue to go on to a four-year college and then continue engineering and design, possibly get a job with that 3D printing company as well.
Hi, I'm Zari Payton, I'm coming from the Oakmoss Public School District, I'm in my second year of this program, and I'm studying a general associate's degree of science to hopefully go into business administration and a psychology dual major. For me, coming into this program wasn't an ideal choice, because I didn't want to leave my high school, but with the push from my mom, I came, and the first semester I was very hesitant to get out there and meet new people, because I didn't want to be in the program, but with the success skills, I feel like that really helped me figure out, like, this is the program I want to be, and be able to finish all the three years so I can get those sixty credits to be able to transfer to a four-year college. And the success skills also really helped me, because I just came back from a HBCU tour, which is Historically Black Colleges and Universities, two weeks ago now, and during that tour, I heard from a lot of different student perspectives, and I learned how most students in college in general, they drop out after the first semester, because they don't know how to manage their time and do school and work, and still have time for themselves. And for me, I feel like with this program, I've gradually continued to learn and improve on those skills because of the success skills that they teach and keep implementing in our mentoring times. And so I'm really excited that I do did this program, and I'm third of the year.
Hello, I'm Benjamin Perry, I go by Ben most of the time, you know, unless I'm feeling fancy, so. I came from the Oakmoss Public Schools, and I was only there for a couple of years, so when I saw the flyer for T E C, I was like, you know, I guess this would be an interesting thing to try, so I did, and it was a good choice, because now I'm a semester and a half, a little bit less than that, away from an Associate of the Arts, Transfer Associate of the Arts, and I plan on transferring to a four-year university and spending a couple of years finishing my bachelor's, I want to get a bachelor's in accounting, and probably my CPA, I mean, yeah, I'm definitely going to get my CPA. And I also have interest in government, and so this experience has really helped me explore these different fields, with the college classes and the atmosphere, you know, professors come in and they're from different, different career paths and different places of work, and so these things just really allow me to connect. I, I currently, thanks to meeting new people, am working at the Learning Commons at Lansing Community College as a tutor for accounting, just the intro course, but next semester I'll be also tutoring the next level course. So, T E C really helped me recognize that my success is in my hands. If I want to do something, I need to do it, and it gave me the ability to seek out the resources necessary to take that success, so, yeah.
Questions from Board members. Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you, first of all, thank you for coming today. I'm familiar with the Early College models and the different kinds of models across Michigan, and I think it's a phenomenal program. In fact, I think every student should be exposed to this environment in one way or another. But just so I'm clear, and I believe you mentioned it, students basically transfer to this high school at the end of their sophomore year, if they've made the commitment for this Early College program. They don't continue to go back then to the high school where they attended their freshman and sophomore year for extracurricular activities or et cetera.
I was a volleyball player at my high school, so I still did play volleyball my junior, what would have been my junior and senior year there while I was in this program, but that was the only thing that I did, just played sports.
I also wrestled too, so it's very easy to go back and forth if you need to, but.
I think it just, it depends on how well you're implementing the success skills of like time management, because for me, I'm in my second year, so I'm technically a senior, and so I still do National Honor Society with my school, I still do track and field in the spring, and I also still, I'm a committee chair for the student body government at my school, so I'm still able to do all of those activities for my last year, and it just makes, it's just making sure that each activity that you do, that you have certain days or certain times that you know that you're going to make that commitment to go back and do that program at your school, but it's doable.
So they maintain their high, they, their diplomas will come from their home high schools, we just take them for those three years onto our campus full-time.
Alright. So the classes that they take are taught by professors at Lansing and also staff at the high school, kind of fifty-fifty, or?
They, they don't go back to their high schools to take classes, so we're high school instructors.
Right.
And so we'll teach them the high school classes on L C C's campus, and then, once they're ready to take college classes, and we do that through a credentialing process, then they will go take college courses with those professors, yes.
Okay.
But they're with us full-time.
Right, right.
Yep.
And Dr. Rosales, maybe you could explain the difference between Early College and Early Middle College for our Board?
Sure. Early Middle Colleges, there's, like I said, there's several different type of models, there's lots of programs that are schools, schools and schools, and so our model is basically we're independent and on the, on the college campus, so that way we can get that total immersion, and get that, that college feel, right from the, from the first day that they step their foot on the campus. So, so what's the difference is that one may be on the high school campus, and, but ours is on the, on the college campus.
So in Early Middle College, they may be, they may, they may have a foot in curricularly, both in high school and college. With Early College, with your program, it's two feet in college.
Correct.
Okay, alright, very good.
As a very good gentleman.
Yeah, I'm sorry, please.
That's a very, very good observation.
Okay, thank you very much. Board member Ramos Montini.
Good morning, and thank you so much for that presentation. I was telling one of my colleagues when I went around saying, giving greetings to everyone, that I'd look for an event that makes my life eventful for that day, and you guys started that event for me today. I salute all the young people, you're very articulate, I salute the instructors, this is awesome. Now, in, in, one of the things that I do in Grand Rapids is solicit funds for scholarships for students, and we're becoming a five-oh-one-C degree, and one of the ideas is to start earlier than college level, starting in ninth grade. So I would welcome your input, as we, we're going to recall ourselves the community to honor Cesari Chavez, and so we would, I would, I would like to invite you later, when we do become, to come and present to my group what you're doing, because it's phenomenal, and this is something that we want to start with in this group, and so your seed will blossom and help a lot of other people. So I thank you, everyone, for your presentation today.
Well, member Fecto.
I second all the accolades, and thank you for being here. The question that I have is with regard to children who might not have transportation, and really want to get into the program. Are there provisions to provide transportation so that all have access to it, let's say their parent is working during the day, or, you know, it just doesn't work out where they would be able to be transported? Are there a plan to make sure that those kids are included?
Yes, we don't, we don't provide transportation, but we do a lot, we do get cat-a-bus passes for our students in our area, so that way, if they have an issue, like you just, like you just mentioned, where they have, that, that has to leave earlier for work, they're able to at least get to the, to the bus stops and be able, and it drops off right in front of our building, so.
Okay, and it goes to all the places where the kids are coming from that feed into the program?
Most part, yes.
To give a sense of how well that's used, we, we have students who have come to us from as far as Munith, if you know where Munith is, down Stockbridge School District, which is, I mean, Munith is pushing toward Dexter, Michigan, and those students would hop on the rural route and nearly a two-hour ride to get to us every day, that would take advantage of that. So it was a small investment on their part, and then they'd be able to use that cat-a-bus pass, I think, once they got into Lansing, at the South Penn Meyer, if I remember correctly. And we've had numbers of students do this since we started back in two thousand and eleven, so we give out quite a few of those, it doesn't answer every need, but it does answer a number of them. And another thing that we do quite explicitly at the beginning of, of the year is we try to line students up to set up carpooling and ride-sharing, to get them to do that with, with one another, and a number of them do it, actually, yeah.
And I had another question about, just so I understand the funding, so, the money that pays for the classes comes from the, the per pupil allowance?
Correct.
So that goes from, so the school is then transferring that money in total to the?
Ninety-seven percent.
Huh?
Ninety-seven percent comes.
Ninety-seven percent comes over? Okay.
And that's, and that's done by the, by the intermediate school district?
Does that put a limit on how many kids per school can come, or?
Some districts are, we have, we have a lot of seats for each, each participating school, but, and some districts decide to say, descend more than what they have, so we have several.
Ninety-seven percent, the three percent stays for volleyball and wrestling.
And prom.
And the prom, that's exactly, that's exactly right, although I think the prom is, is funded in a different fashion. Dr. Q.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, thanks, Michelle. And just another thought.
Ninety-seven percent, the three percent stays for volleyball and wrestling.
And prom.
And the prom. That's exactly right, although I think the prom is funded in a different fashion. Dr. Pugh.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, thanks, Michelle. And just another thought, Brooke, I'm happy to hear the engineering and I did chemical engineering and I also did, I was, I did dual enrollment. So, and at that time it was kind of unique, but it was a tremendous experience. And so thank you all for your presentation and what you're doing here. The only thing that I think was a drawback, but I was able to overcome, but just something to think about, is that like a field like chemical engineering, by the time I was getting to Florida A&amp;M, the best HBCU by the way. But by the time I was getting there, I was in Calculus III, I was in P Chem. So, you know, it was really tricky there trying to live a college life, a real college life, what I'll say, and then also maneuvering, being that advanced because I had already taken all of those classes, especially in a field such as chemical engineering. So just some thoughts on that. I know that you're preparing the students to be on college campus, but they're not, to me, I still don't see it as that real college experience that they will have once they transfer first. So thinking about how they balance those things there. So any thoughts on that or...
I was going to say, from experience, I felt that high school did not prepare me at all for the college, the college life. And joining early college definitely prepared me really fast too. I remember first semester was very tough for me, but everything, every place is going to have a different experience, but at the end of the day, you're still going to be going there to learn. So I see what you're saying as in, yes, it's slightly different, but we're still in that college environment because LCC is still a college. So I do agree, but also kind of disagree.
I mean, it's something to over, that you definitely can overcome, but just thinking about the ramping up, you know, that you're going to be in those...
One of the things that we do do is we do college and career readiness events. And one of the events that we have them do is actually take them to a large college, a medium college, and a private college, so that way they get an opportunity to be on the campus, other than our campus, the campus of LCC, and get an opportunity to talk to other students and get a tour guide of what's happening there. So they, I mean, it's not the full immersion and the full taste of it, but at least they can see and say, I feel better on this campus, but I don't feel better on this campus.
To grow off of what Elijah said, I, when I came to the early college, I really immersed myself into the college campus. So while it may not be like an officially large campus, like I have a job on campus, I'm helping teach my fellow students, there's people that are, you know, aged like years older than me that I actually help with classes and I just, I felt really prepared to go out into the college environment. This year, students from my grade in high school are joining the college and I've actually been helping some of them, like when they come in, I'll be like, hey, how are you doing? And if I see they're working on homework, I can give them tips on how to, you know, manage their time more. And so I felt pretty prepared for the college environment and I'm ready for, I think I'm ready for a four-year.
And you get what I'm saying, it's just that you might be in Calc III and your dorm mate might be in, you know, something far, you know, where they're just able to get an opportunity to get their feet in the door. But I think, I hear what you're saying, you feel that where you are now, you're getting that environment, you're preparing yourself already for the environment that you'll be going to. So best wishes to you all.
Our students were really impressive today, board. And they represent not just strong examples of this program, but strong examples of programs across the state. Our young people increasingly are involved in programming, not simply in high school, but in college. We've increased our dual enrollment, we've increased our early college, our early middle college, our career and technical education programming, our advanced placement programming, our IB programming. We'll share more of this in the coming months as we help to fully display what's going on in Michigan public education rather than narrowly display it. Our young people are the best advocates for Michigan public education. We appreciate them. We appreciate our staff coming and drum beating around this outstanding program and doing so on a day that was a little challenging from a weather perspective. But after all, this is, this is Michigan, it is not Mississippi. And we expect a little bit of snow, even November 12th. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
That's snowing, so you can't...
It does, but that's for a different reason.
Yeah.
Because enough about climate change.
Yeah.
It doesn't exist. Yeah, that was hard. You guys took the money. Hang on.
Next item on the committee, the whole agenda is the update on accountability systems. Michigan Department of Education continues to work on implementing the statewide system of accountability measures, letter grades and rankings specified by Public Act 601 of 2018, adopted on December 28, 2019. Here to share briefly with us on this and to help engage the board in a continued conversation on this issue and ultimately the finalization of this system is Dr. Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student and School Supports. Before Dr. Kiesler begins, however, let me just share with the board that we will be presenting category by category. Discussion will take place. The board will vote on a number of categories today. The remainder will be finalized in December, either by the State Board or if still unfinished after the December board meeting by the department. Are there any questions from board members? Hearing none. Dr. Kiesler, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning, board members. So as you all know, we have been in a month-long conversation regarding the A to F system. And so we wanted to pause for a moment and just remember where we've been and where we are now. So just recalling where we've been, PA 601 was passed in December of 2018 during lame duck and was signed into law by then Governor Snyder. And at that point, the department began months of discussions with the U.S. Department of Education to understand to what extent that new law could meet the requirements of the Every Student Succeeds Act. By May of 2019, it was clear that the state system could not meet the requirements of ESSA, and we escalated our design efforts around the A to F system. So while work had been occurring, we really escalated those efforts around May. The legislatively required peer review panel was nominated by Governor Whitmer during the summer, and the MDE began discussing the A to F system with a focus on the elements that we've been focusing on, those decision-making discretion elements with this board in August. So right now, the State Board of Education has reviewed our initial A to F work and has provided some decisions and lots of feedback to the department. Both the department and the State Board have reviewed the recommended cut scores from the standard recommending committee. We've also reviewed the report of the legislatively required peer review panel. So using these inputs, what we're going to look at in this presentation represents the State Board of Ed input and the proposed cut scores. Just a brief reminder to everyone about how the grading scale or the cut scores that you see came to pass. So what the law requires is that schools have to be assigned certain grades and certain labels. What, where the cut scores are, or what makes an A, a B, a C, is decision-making discretion. So a cut score is that number that separates one grade from another. It's a grading scale essentially. How do we determine a cut score? We utilize, the department utilized a process to develop recommended cut scores, which included an independent facilitator, panel of educators and other experts to develop definitions, use data, and produce recommended cut scores. That legally mandated peer review panel did review these proposed standards and cut scores and wrote a report. It's important to note that the peer review panel was not given authority to approve but to review, and that's what they've done with the report that they made available at the end of October. And then we need to at some point approve these cut scores, which is decision-making discretion. Saying just a bit more about the independent facilitator, we engaged the National Center for the Improvement of Educational Assessment to facilitate our cut score workshop with that standard recommending panel. The center, as it's known more commonly, has done this kind of standard setting with five other states. So they're a nationally recognized independent voice that can help us with this process. We used a committee of practitioners that had 11 individuals and that committee met twice, first to establish those performance level descriptors, which are the definitions of what the different grades mean, and then to look at impact data and to recommend cut scores. So at this point, we'll move into these recommended cut scores. Starting with on-track attendance. On-track attendance means that a student misses fewer than 10% of their school days. So the numbers in the table represent the recommended cut scores. Just reading from left to right to make sure everyone is on the same page, if a school had between 94 and 100% of its students with on-track attendance, meaning they're missing less than 10% of the days, they would be given a quote ranking label of significantly above average. A note on these ranking labels, this is required in law, that there are three elements that be assigned a ranking label. And they're called ranking labels even though they don't actually rank, they're really just more descriptors. And these are the names of the required ranking labels. So all of this is prescribed in law that this category have a ranking label applied to it. So again, returning to the chart, if a school had between 94 and 100% of its students on track attendance, they'd be ranked or given a significantly above average. 88% to 94% above average, 76.5% to 88% average, 55% to 76.5% below average, and any school with below 55% of their students with on-track attendance would be significantly below average. And using these cut scores, we have roughly a third of schools above average, a third average, and a third below average.
Board members, any discussion on this particular category? Again, we're doing this category by category through, we're, as we did at the last meeting, we're banking decisions as we go. So you're making decisions as we move forward, narrowing our focus to the few items left to discuss in December. Questions on this? Yes?
Just a quick question about what we already talked about. Above average, average, and below average equates to how many numbers of days missed? I think we talked about that, right?
So any student who misses fewer than 10% of days is considered on-track attendance. And then this metric counts up the percent of students in a school who are on track. So if you had, it doesn't directly translate into days missed, it translates into kids missing less than 10% of days. So like an above-average school, between 88 and 94% of their kids would have been in school at least 90% of the time.
Okay, which roughly translates to, did we say 18?
Right, so 10% of days is 18 days in general with a standard calendar.
And that's above average?
If a school had between 88 and 94% of their kids missing 18 days or less, they would be above average.
Yes, okay.
So this is unchanged from our previous conversation? Any additional question or discussion? Any additional question or discussion? If not, hearing none, could I have a motion to move this particular set of cut scores?
So moved.
So moved by Board Trustee Ramos Montini. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I had a very quiet second from Board Member Snyder. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
I have a question. Just so I...
Question from Board Member Fekto.
So if we approve this one piece?
Yes.
Then when we discuss the whole, as a whole, does it mean that we cannot come back to it if we approve it as we go?
It's hard to come back to it and wrap the December, the December piece.
I'm just, I'm just curious to see how...
I'm not sure there's, I'm not sure there's an interrelationship. Remember, there are three ranking labels, there are five A through Fs. The ranking labels are, we're moving through the ranking labels initially, we're moving through the A through F subsequently into today's conversation. We have a goal of hitting all of them today, minimally to make sure that we know where we are with any additional information that we need to provide the board in December. Roughly, we've ordered these from least involved to most involved.
Okay. So the, these... I will trust you that this is, that they don't interact. I'm just, okay, all right.
This really, this really is a standalone metric to your, I think, to your implicit question. It is a standalone metric.
All right. And then the weight that each metric has, is that a discussion as well?
It is, it is, well, the eight don't relate to one another, but there is a metric that we talked about, the comparison with similar schools, where we amended based on board input the way in which we compare similar schools. So we included a revised definition of economically disadvantaged, narrowing it from free and reduced-price lunch to free lunch. We increased the percentage associated with that factor. We also added a special needs percentage in. And so those were areas where we amended the way in which we determined who the like schools would be. And yes, that is part of the presentation and an important part of the presentation from my vantage point, yes. Dr. Pugh and then Ms. Snyder.
And I think you're going to repeat what you just said and maybe what you said even previously. I just want to make sure I know how we are voting on each of these rankings.
Sure. So it's a, it's a separate vote for each of these metrics. Ultimately, as the board is aware, we have a responsibility under law to have a five-letter grade, three-ranking label system. And so you have the opportunity here to shape this, we welcome that. As you know, I felt strongly about that, I felt strongly about it for months, but at some point, this system has to be landed. So we're going to do all that we can do collectively through the December board meeting, at which point, if there are any outstanding decisions, the department will make those and will move forward in order to wrap this by the deadline that interim State Superintendent Alice indicated in the spring of 2019. Does that help?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, good. Ms. Snyder.
And just to be really clear, because I want to go back to the first few slides that you read off of, there was a panel of appointed advisors and then also a group of 11 educators, which were considered expertise practitioners in the field. So these are the recommendations here, sort of like this is a foundation, this is where we start, and we can always have further discussion.
Correct, it's a good point. And in this particular case, there was no movement off of that recommendation. There was in other cases, there was not in this case. And by the way, the movement off of those recommendations was movement that the board participated in. So, and we'll footnote that as we discuss later in this discussion. Any, Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. And I'm probably getting way ahead of the game on this, but my understanding is that each one of these labels and grades will have some sort of a descriptor for the reader.
Bless you.
For the individual who is looking at them so that they understand how this particular, you know, what does significantly above average mean?
So the answer is yes, there will be a descriptor recognizing that these labels are a little bit mind's eye-like, that different people have different perspectives of what different labels mean. But we will describe each of the labels statistically, so minimally, people will be able to understand statistically what they mean irrespective of whether you agree with how any of the labels was defined. Okay? Okay? We acknowledge, the board is well aware, of the peril of the definition, that we believe strongly in providing all of this information publicly. We do through the parent dashboard. You have, for many months, provided this information, actually for a couple of years, provided it through the parent dashboard. And so this is not about transparency at all. This is about putting a label or a series of labels on top of that transparency, because the transparency already exists and has existed as a function of the parent dashboard for a number of years. And that was your doing, board. You put forward, you created with the department, a parent dashboard and made all of this information available. This puts labels on a series of statistics. And you could argue that that's good. There are some people that do. You could argue that that's bad. Certainly, that's the position of the state board. And I'm not trying to relitigate that now. I'm simply saying that all of the information that undergirds this has been available. Okay. Do I have any more questions? Any more comments on this metric? Mr. McMillan, welcome. We are on on-track attendance, slide number six. Hearing no other questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it? I'm sorry?
I'm still abstaining.
Okay. All right. Very good. So we have all ayes, with the exception of Dr. Pugh, who has abstained. Okay? Dr. Kiesler.
Moving on to assessment participation. So this is the percent of students who are assessed on the state assessments. Recall that by state and federal law, you are required to assess all students, and we hold schools accountable, and we're held accountable as a state for assessing 95% of students. So while the requirement is all, we put some error in there, you know, some room in there for below perfect, I guess. So 95% is the expectation schools are held to. On the chart, you see the recommended cut scores. So any school assessing between 96.5% and 100% of their students would be rated significantly above average. Any school assessing between 94% and 96.5% of their students would be above average. 91.5% to 94% would be average. 86% to 91.5% would be below average. And any school that assesses below 86% of their students would be significantly below average. And given that the vast majority of our schools do test more than 95% of their children, roughly 90% of schools are above average or significantly above average on this metric.
Board members, questions? Mr. McMillan. Actually, you want to know something? Let's do this, if we could, to engage the conversation. Let's get a motion and a second, and then do the discussion. If board ultimately does not want to vote on the metric today, that's fine, not a problem, but I think that's proper. So do I have a motion?
No.
So moved by Ms. Fecto, second by Ms. Ramos Montini. Discussion. Mr. McMillan?
Well, I mean, I've voiced this in the past, but I'm... I know there are parent groups out there that actually encourage opting out of testing. And... Well, actually, I needed to ask the first question. This is simply the state one test?
Any of the state assessments, the state-required assessments. So the M-Step or the My Access for students with significant cognitive disabilities.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, I don't blame... You know, I think there are some kids that, you know, have problems taking tests, you know, that there are others that would argue that, you know, the tests are not transparent. Parents can't get to see what's on the test. They're not sure, you know, if it's appropriate, if it's... You know, I think there's so many problems that I, you know, wouldn't... I'd like to expand it so that, you know, that... I don't know. I just... I guess I'm not as concerned about the level. I know that there's a federal law. I don't think they've ever taken money away for, you know, for lower than the 95% or whatever the feds require. Glad there's local control. I keep hearing it from Washington. They like to... I think when we're talking about what's best for our kids, maybe they ought to put their money where their mouth is. And so at any rate, I... Not to... I wouldn't mind if saw this going down a little bit, and maybe 90 to 100 is the top one, and 80 to 90.
Dr. Kiesler, if you'd be kind enough to share with us broadly what the distribution is currently?
So, like I said, the great majority of schools are actually significantly above average, over 85%, and then approximately another 5% are above average, and that gets us to 90%. So most schools are above average or significantly above average.
Yeah, but if we change those, I think it would send a message that the board isn't all that... You know, we are understanding of parent groups and others that are concerned about these tests, and we're not gonna, you know, penalize them or even give them a bad quote-unquote grade.
Other thoughts on this metric? Dr. Kiesler, remind us, this was the recommendation of the standard recommending panel?
It was.
It was. Okay. Recognizing what Mr. McMillan said, that 95% is the federal standard for testing, and that we hold local schools to that federal standard, that I agree with Mr. McMillan. We've not seen a cutoff of state funding from the feds. One wonders if that would ever take place. Nonetheless, it is the federal standard, and it is related to all of our title funding. And so we flout it at our peril. The board should be aware, though... Yeah. The board should be aware, though, that we are not here having this discussion because of the feds. We are here having this discussion because the state legislature passed this law. This is not a function of the federal law. This is a function of the state law. So that I would encourage you, to the extent that you have a problem with this exercise-law, I would encourage you to locate it at the locus of the problem, namely, the entity that approved this in December of 2018. Any other questions or thoughts on this metric? Yes?
Just to clarify, this assessment participation, well, any of these, because of the state law, not talking about ESA, do not apply to special education center programs and do not apply to alternative schools, mostly high schools, but there are some other. So they won't get this label.
Correct.
Any of them.
Correct. So just to say again what Dr. Pritchett just said, to say back, the state law requires that special ed center programs and alternative education schools, which, to your point, are largely alternative high schools, but there are some other ones, do not receive any of They are exempted from this system.
Other questions?
Correct.
And that's an important distinction for the board to re-recall, because we have all schools in here now. So these numbers are going to lightly move on the margins when we remove alternative education schools, when we remove special education centers from our numbers. That's really, really very important for people to understand, that there is a difference between, a disjunction between, the federally-approved ESA plan, the index system, and the state A through F system. Yes? Yes?
So the state law requires us to assess the participation rates?
The state law requires us to assess, to include this metric as part of the system. Five-letter grades, three-ranking labels. This is one of the three ranking labels.
Specifically, required?
Required, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We would never... There is no way that we would ever put a ranking label on assessment participation for every reason that Mr. McMillan noted, and then some. We would just simply never do it. You could have very, very different schools with very different populations, operating in very different ways. And I might add, this is arguably the simplest of the metrics, and it's still with some measure of challenge associated with this. Again, I think all of these numbers, the raw numbers, ought to all be available for people to see and to make their individual determinations about. But to draw judgments about specific schools broadly, based on individual metrics, I think is really very, very challenging. I don't recommend it.
I also had a question. When you say the alternative schools, do you mean some of these privatized schools that handle adjudicated youth? Or, you know, I'm thinking like Wolverine up in the thumb, or are those the schools that are opted out?
So to be an alternate education school, you have to meet several criteria. You have to be labeled as such. You have to label all the kids in the school as alternate education students. And there's a third one that I can get Chris up here to answer if you'd like. But so any school that is serving kids who meet a certain definition or providing education in a certain way. So I believe Wolverine probably is one of those, because it is an adjudicated youth school, but we'd have to... I'd have to double-check the list to be sure. But it's pretty stringent. You can't just be like, I'm an all-ed school. You have to label, you know, you have to provide some documentation. So we're sure that anybody who's an all-ed school in the data is actually an all-ed school in reality.
Other questions or comments? Yes?
I just can't let you get away with Dr. Ray kind of passing the buck to the legislature. They said we have to do this. They did not say we have to make it look like this. So they gave us the discretion, and this is... We don't always have... We don't have very many decisions at this table. A lot of them are very important, the ones that we do have, but here, you know, we have arrived at a time where we have some discretion. And, you know, this table has... This board has said that we're not a fan of these assessments. It tends to bring right and left together in many ways. There are certain groups that want accountability and want something very rigid and treat all kids the same, and, you know, cookie-cut, and they like this kind of stuff. There's others that, on the right, who don't like Common Core, and they don't like the Common Core line tests, and so they say, we want our kids to opt out. On the left, they say that, you know, they want opt-out for other reasons, but... And maybe some of those reasons as well. So this is an area where, you know, we don't... The feds say 95%. That's fine. That's feds. But here, we have a decision to make, and I'm gonna propose an amendment when it's appropriate.
Fair enough. So other thoughts? All right. So you have a distribution in front of you from the standard recommending panel. Its distribution would have 90% of the schools either significantly above average or above average. At this point, Mr. McMillan, if you would like to recommend an amendment to the initial motion?
Yep.
That would be... This would be the time.
Very good. I'd like to amend it to make, basically, significantly above would be 90 to 100, above-average 80 to 90, average 70 to 80, below-average 60 to 70, significantly below-average below 60.
Okay. If we can just slow down, because there are going to be...
Well, it would just be in increments of 10, like they do at schools.
Fair enough. But there are ramifications to the distribution. And although there can't be profound ramifications to the distribution, because the distribution was already significantly weighted toward above average, 90% being above average.
Well, wait. There's no second. There's no discussion on the motion until we have a second.
No, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to give Dr. Kiesler a little bit of time to help us with distribution.
Well, if there's no second, then there's no discussion anyway.
Fair enough. Do we have a second to the motion?
We do have a second to that motion.
There you go. Okay. All right. So, Dr. Kiesler, if you could advise us roughly on what this means in terms of change?
I can... So, sorry, I'm not trying to stutter here. I want to actually grab my computer and our tool that allows me to look at distribution. In general, this will be almost everybody. Almost everybody will get significantly above average. If you take 90 down... Thank you very much, Scott. If you take 90 down, because 90 was in the middle of the below-average cut, so that'll leave us with only the 5% to 6% anything but significantly above average.
Okay. So this would take us from 90% above average, either the top two categories, to 95% in the very top category?
Yes, roughly.
Okay. All right. Any questions on the math of that?
Can I give my... Can I address my motion?
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, I just think that... I understand that, you know, it's already distributed quite to the left anyway before my motion. If this were to pass, it'd be even further to the left. I understand that. But it really is about what we're saying schools can do in the future. It's not what it is today. We would be saying that, look, if you want to do what a lot of parents are urging you to do, we're fine with it. Now, we're gonna have problems with the feds if everybody does it and we get below 95% as a state. But if you, local district, want to go down to 80 or down to 90, 91, or 80, you're still gonna be above average. We still understand what you're doing. We agree with much of your reasoning. And so districts... I'm not talking about what the distribution is today, but I'm talking about future and what the message it sends. Not just a message. I'm not doing things just flippantly for a message. I think it sends an important... It tells the districts importantly that we understand that these tests do not measure accountability. They are not something that should be, you know, the be-all and-all, and that for, you know, by all means, that every kid has to take it. If there are parents that don't like it, don't think it's appropriate, want to see what they are before they take it, and the law doesn't allow them to see the questions, well, then, fine. You know, I think that they ought to be able to do it, and this, just the way that I've done with my motion, would make it so that they're not... The penalizing, the being graded below average or significantly below average wouldn't fall upon them.
Okay. So I appreciate the explanation. Any questions for Mr. McMillan or comments more broadly? Ms. Fecto?
I'm really sympathetic to this argument. The only caveat that I have is I remember stories in Detroit when people would talk about test scores and certain other districts gaming the system by having their low performers stay home to give them an edge on it. So they would use the discrepancies in selecting who would take the tests. So that's in the back of my mind, although I think, I don't know how that would work. I'm not sure what the penalty is for being on this, how much it weighs into the overall weight.
There really isn't. I mean, it's important to understand, these are standalone metrics, and, you know, the individual label assigned to the individual school is whatever any individual person wants to make of it.
Right.
Yeah.
So to put a... Just to expand that, because this is a... You've asked the question twice. There is no overall anything.
Right.
There's the five and the three, and they stand alone. So unlike some other systems we've talked about in the past 10 years, some of them did sum up, and what they each weighted mattered. That doesn't happen here.
Okay.
So this doesn't do anything besides have a label on it, and it stands by itself.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yep.
Okay.
Other... Dr. Pugh?
I'll just say, unlike what Tom is claiming to be, I'm not above being flippant to send across the message. So this is probably the only one that I will not abstain from, so I will support this.
Okay.
The amendment.
I don't think I'm being flippant either. I agree.
I am.
There you go. Okay. So the motion on the table is to move from the recommendation as initially presented by the standard recommending panel to 10 percentage point bands, 90 to 100, 80 to 89.999, 70 to 79.999. 89.999, 70 to 79.999, and so on and so forth. The consequence of which is to move from 90% significantly above average or above average to 95%.
It would actually be 98%. I've got my tool now.
98%.
97% would be significantly above average and 1% would be above average. So 98 total.
Very good.
Between those two categories.
So that is the, that is the, we are voting on Mr. McMillan's amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
And we have Ms. Ramos Montini abstaining. So like the first vote, unanimous, save for an abstention, the abstention this time being Ms. Ramos Montini. Third category, Dr. Kiesler.
Oh, no, we have to vote. That was just my amendment.
Oh.
I amended the motion.
Fair enough. All in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
I still abstain here.
Abstention.
I'm all confused because we had conversations of all of this in those special meetings and I thought we had settled all of these questions. So I'm totally confused.
I, I didn't hear his.
So, so I cannot vote for something I'm confused with when I thought we had all settled what we were supposed to settle.
I hope we hadn't because it was behind, it was behind closed doors. I hope we were settled.
Yeah. And I think, I think in fairness, just for, from a clarity perspective, we did share extensively with the board in publicly noticed small group sessions. Board members participated in those publicly noticed small group sessions. There was no significant conversation about this category at that time. That is correct. That is correct.
Could I, can I add too?
Yes.
Because, you know, my, we were presented with information and we were, we gave our feedback generally, it was much general, but we never received a final document to vote on until today. I just didn't see this until today.
And there was no majority. I think that's important too.
Yeah, it was never a majority. So it was more like, this is, this is what, you know, the information is.
Understood. Right. Okay. Third category.
Okay. Okay. This is the third category, the subgroup comparison. And remember, the goal of this metric appears to be to give a school a label based on how well their, or how, how well they do with their subgroups overall. And so we had extensive discussion at the October meeting about combining the subgroups. And so at this point, this is a combined, this, this combines all the available subgroups. Essentially, what this metric does is it looks at each subgroup and how much it's below the state average. And it assigns them a, a score. One means you're, you're right near the state average. Two means you're below, kind of bad. And three means you're really below. And then it sums them all up and gives you an overall distance from the state average. And then these are the cut scores. Where this gets weird is the required ranking labels use the word average and the metric is also comparing to the average. So it becomes a little bit circular. But what these cut scores mean is any school with a one or low, like a, a one would be significantly above average, meaning they, they are right near the state average with their subgroups. Their subgroups perform near the state average for subgroups. A school that gets from a one to a 1.25, it means there's, still their subgroups are pretty near the state average. A 1.25 to a 1.5 means they're getting further from the state average, but they're still kind of not that far from it. A 1.5 to a 1.9 means now your subgroups are kind of performing below the state average. And if you have a score of 1.9 or greater, because this goes up to a three, your subgroups perform well below the state average. I think, we think one of the important things with this metric is that roughly 85% of schools receive a label of average or better, meaning that their subgroups perform relatively close to the mean performance for the subgroups for the state. And we acknowledge that this metric is a challenging one. You know, we've had several discussions about it at the board table. So we leave that statement there alongside our numbers.
Other, so if we could, just to follow what we've done with the last two metrics, if I could have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ramos Montini, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fecto, discussion.
I guess, oh, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay. So we have School A and, well, first of all, the magic number is 30, right?
To have a subgroup count in this, yes.
Okay. So they have more than 30 ELL students and they have more than 30 special ed students. You're going to combine those two and then compare it to the same two at the state average?
Almost. We would say, what's your EL performance relative to state average?
Okay.
For ELs. And if it was, let's say it was just right on par, it's just at the state average, they'd get a one in this ranking of one, two, three. One meaning close to the average, two meaning far, moderate, and three meaning far. So they're a one for EL. And then let's say they're students with disabilities. We look at the state average for students with disabilities and they're far below. So they get a three for that.
Okay.
So then we would average them out over the two, so to, then we would combine and say, okay, you got a two-ish. So you've got this one that's well below and one that's on.
And they'll never be compared to School B.
Right.
That number is their own entity number, period.
Yes. Their subgroup and their school relative to state mean, and then all of that summed up, and then it's put on this distribution. This isn't one that compares to other schools. It sounds like the comparison to similar schools, but it's, it's very different.
It is, it is a comparison by subgroup in whatever subgroups count for that school with the state average for those subgroups. So if you are a homogeneous school, that is to say, if you are a school that is all something, you may count in only a category or two. If you are a more diverse school, you have more categories that count, this becomes a more complicated metric. This is arguably the peril of the metric. It is arguably the downside of the metric. I might add, it's been the downside of metrics for 17 years from No Child Left Behind on with a series of accountability systems that, that for all intents and purposes, treat those schools that educate more diverse populations in a more severe way. But that's the way, that's the way this works. That if you have under 30 of a given category, that category does not count for you. Under 30 special needs kids, category does not count. Under 30 English language learners, the category does not count. Those categories drop off and you are compared only with those categories in which you have 30 or more young people. Right?
Assuming they tested.
30 or more people that have tested. Yes, ma'am.
Tested.
Yes, ma'am. That is, that is a, a good distinction.
But when you get around the number 30, it gets-
Yes, ma'am.
It fluctuates sometimes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other, other thoughts? Más preguntas? Pensamientos?
No tengo.
Yes.
Performing, so when you say those who have taken the test, that's the particular, you know, M-Step or, okay.
I mean, remember, remember, this is, this is almost exclusively test-based and you can only count those who have tested.
Right.
That's the, that's the, you know, that's the case with proficiency, that's the case with growth, that's the case with this particular metric. With English learner progress, it's a little bit different. It is with a, an assessment, but with, it's with a different assessment. It's with WIDA as opposed to, as opposed to M-Step or MY Access or MEB.
I, I guess I'd be remiss into not, because I, this is an area that I'm not as well up on as Michelle and some others. As, as far as the subgroup, I understand there, you know, here again, we have discretion. So I'm wanting to understand where our discretion is before I vote. It doesn't have to be 30, is that right? Nobody, there's nothing in state law that says 30.
The, the-
The state law does not say 30.
No.
Okay.
But the, but if I could, please.
Okay.
The, but the SSA accountability system does.
Right.
And to change N, the, the sample size, if you will, the N, is a more fundamental change. And that's not going to be done this go-round. If you want to reflect upon that for the next iteration, for next year, we're happy to have that conversation. There are people in the department that would argue in favor of a somewhat smaller sample size. There are others that would argue in favor of a somewhat larger sample size. This is very technically-
Yeah.
-complicated.
Right.
It deserves a full hearing.
That, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that those that are more attuned to these, this issue are hap, are comfortable with this. Because I don't, yeah, I understand, it could be lower, it could be higher. I just, is 30 the right one? Because we have discretion. I'm just, I was just told that it couldn't be done now, but I, I-
Yeah.
-think that with computers and with enough people and I know organizations, it can turn ships around pretty quickly, so.
If I could though, this is not a ship. And we are trying to the best of our capability because we've argued that there is a substantial difference between the index system and the A through F system. We've argued, you can't have it both ways. You can't both say it's a problem for them to be so distinct and, oh, by the way, we're going to make them as distinct as possible. The SSA system has an N equals 30. I'm happy to rethink that. Absolutely have no issues rethinking it at all. But to rethink it on the fly is to do disservice to the technical complexity of it. And it really is technical that, you know, to go, to go to N equals 20 means that every child is worth 5% conceivably, whereas currently at N equals 30, basically every kid can be worth 3%. That difference can, can throw things fairly, fairly profoundly. Again, not that it's an unreasonable conversation. I think it's a completely legitimate conversation. We're happy to have the board in the conversation. I know I'm happy to have the conversation, but it does, it should be fully vetted. Ms. Snyder, then Ms. Fecto.
Make sure I understand that the 85% in the average, what is the range in M-Step scores that that ish represents? Kind of like the days with the first metric.
So what that translates into is that about 85% of schools have their subgroups that perform not vastly different than the average for that subgroup statewide.
So that, which change?
What?
Like the, the average of each subgroup range would change?
Yes, it would. Absolutely, it would.
Throw it out.
Yeah, there isn't a good corollary into a, a score. But it does mean, again, it, about 85% of schools, their subgroups don't look or perform vastly different than the average statewide.
So basically, six of seven hang close to-
Yeah.
-or are slightly above-
Yeah.
-the average.
Their economically disadvantaged kids in their school-
Okay.
-perform near the average for economically disadvantaged kids statewide.
And we're saying that's the average for this cut score. Does that translate to, the way M-Step says this score means this?
No, not exactly. So with M-Step, I'll use economically disadvantaged again. In general, in the state, our economically disadvantaged subgroup performs 20 to 25% lower than non-economically disadvantaged. So if you're, and that percent is if you're proficient or not. So in general, like statewide, if 45% of our students are proficient, the economically disadvantaged subgroup is usually around 25, 20% proficient. So it translates into at the, at the kid level, that proficiency, are you proficient or not? The kids aren't, we don't use these labels anywhere but this system. We don't use an average label with kids on the M-Step. They get the proficient, you know, they get their scale score.
Okay.
I know it's, it's, I know it's a bit of a hard answer. I'm trying to help with the-
It just doesn't sound like a community.
Translation of metrics, yeah.
It is a hard answer, but in fairness, it's a hard metric.
Yeah.
It, it's the most challenging of the metrics. And, and it is the least intuitive of the metrics. The other metrics are, I, I think anyway, more, more simple to understand on their face. So, you know, I don't find fault in either the question or the response. I just think it's a, it's, it's a hard area to understand. That's my perspective. Okay? And I know this from personal experience. I've been on the questioning side in other meetings. Yeah. Other, Ms. Fecto?
There was a, there was some pretty heated discussion about lowering the N score. And, but my concern is that these are test scores, high, you know, high sex standardized test scores for kids, and I don't think the tests are a valid measure. You know what I mean? So it's sort of like the, the opt-out thing. If it means less pressure on these kids to take these tests and have their worth measured by these tests, you know, I, especially kids who might have learning disabilities, to use a test to measure, I don't think that's a good measure of success for them. So I, that's why I, I kind of, not as strident about lowering the N score for those reasons. Yeah.
Any other, Dr. Pugh?
This is something that I shared, you know, I really, I might have not fully thought it through, you know, what this looks like. But I guess looking at how we're combining all the scores, and I've shared this with you-
Yes.
-and I'm, I'm thinking about just the research that shows that African-American students being taught by African-American teachers fare better. And so I'm just wondering is, if once we combine all these scores, is, would that tease that out, if, if that were the case? And are we going to look at these individual scores to see what's going on, the categories, to see what's going on?
We can certainly share that with individual schools. Such a high percentage is above average. You know, we're sitting 85% at above average in this metric. It's hard to imagine that the label is going to have much helpfulness associated with performance or with practice in an individual school or district. You might find, as we discussed, that there is something around test results or graduation rates or college going or college continuation or college completion that's related to the factors that you're talking about. And I'm very familiar with this literature and increasingly people in the department are as well, because I'm drumbeating around the importance of a more diverse staff. We are not diverse in our teaching workforce, as you know, in the state. And we need to do better.
Right. And as we're talking, you know, hopefully someone, I don't know what else you can do with the data. I know you have to be careful with that. Because I'm thinking about like some regressions where you're not just looking at descriptive data, but I would like to know an Asian student who is high in poverty, how they would fare and how they're faring in some of these districts, looking at some of the confounders. I, I would like to, I mean, that, to me, that would, and we all know this, but looking at, at some of that information, if, if you have all of these data points, being able to look at, at the information in that way, we'll, again, we, we know this.
I, I think there is tremendous utility in what you're talking about. I also think that it's involved. I would welcome your participation in it with us. Because what you're trying to do is to data mine to drive higher student achievement in particular districts. I think there's some real value to that. Some of what drives higher student achievement gets mitigated or, or completely overwhelmed statistically by other factors. So a, a district that educates a more diverse population of children, a larger percentage of African-American children, for example, a larger percentage of Latino children, may also have fewer dollars per kid relative to need. And so the latter factor could overwhelm the former factor and it could appear as if the former factor has no impact. I, I refer you and you, I think you know this study. The Johns Hopkins study says that if an African-American child has a, a teacher of color on or before his third grade year, in or before his third grade year, he's 13% more likely to graduate from high school. Two such teachers in or before the end of third grade, 32% more likely to graduate from. That's a big deal. And that is with pretty rigorous regression analysis. And I think we ought to be referring to that, drumbeating around a more diverse workforce as a result.
And I'll just say this, because as, as you're talking, it reminds me, you know, as a public health person- health person, if I did a research study that showed that smokestacks were in an area, and then these are cancer rates, and I put that data out there as descriptive, and I drew a conclusion that it was because of the smokestacks that, and those smokestacks should be closed, that the cancer rate, I mean, the cancer rates are high because of the smokestacks, and the smokestacks should be removed, that would be totally irresponsible of me. You know, if I was not also adding to that lifestyle. And that's what we're doing here. So, anyway, I'll continue.
I don't disagree. I don't want to be, I don't want to be the one that supports.
I'm just trying to bring some pictures to why I have this issue.
Yeah, I'm not the one to support the metric.
Yeah, I know.
No, no. But if I could, I think we end in the same place. One, the need to be informed by better statistical research.
Right.
Okay? Beyond what the state legislature has noted here. But also, irrespective of any of the research that we might do within the state, the need to have a more diverse teaching staff to teach both our young people of color and those who have never experienced a teacher of color and who themselves could benefit from. Yes. Other questions or thoughts on this exciting area? Going once and twice, hearing none, all in favor of the recommendation as approved? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
Everybody's abstaining.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we have.
Wait, how many abstentions? So there's three?
I have six.
Well, there's four votes is required, or five is required for any passage.
Five is required, and if we have to implement this via the department, because the board doesn't want to make a decision, we'd be happy to do that.
Or we could decide in December. Michelle, you're comfortable with this? Because I'll vote, I was going to abstain, but if you're comfortable, I'll vote for it.
I don't know if comfortable might be.
We can change it.
I don't see the impact.
Why don't we, if we?
I don't think it's going to have a great impact.
All right, let's retake the vote.
Do you want a roll call?
Yeah, if we could do a roll call, that would be great. Thank you, Meryl.
Vecchio?
I'll vote for it.
You can't change them.
Because the first letter is missing. That was an aye?
Yes.
Okay. McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Abstain.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Abstain.
Tilly?
Abstain.
And Albridge is absent. Four ayes.
Four ayes, three abstentions, one absent. English learner progress.
Did not pass?
It did not.
Okay, so does that mean we'll bring it up in December?
Time permitting, yes. Otherwise, the department will make the decision. English learner progress. Dr. Kiesler.
So moving on to, we are now moving into the five required grades, and this is one of the five. We are required to give schools a grade based on their English learner progress, and that is the number of students, the percent of English learners who demonstrate proficiency or adequate growth on the English learner, English language learner assessment, which is the WIDA access. And in the chart, you see the recommended cut scores. So we would, they recommend, these cut scores recommend or would say that any school that has between 60 and 100% of its English learners demonstrating proficiency or growth on the WIDA would get an A. Any school with between 45 and 60% demonstrating proficiency or growth get a B. 25% of students to 45% of students with proficiency or growth get a C. 10% to 25% would get a D. And any school that had below 10% of their English learners demonstrating proficiency or adequate growth would receive an F. Using these recommended cut scores, approximately half of the schools eligible for this grade, meaning they have an English learner subgroup, receive either As or Bs. About 30% receive a C, and the remaining 20% receive Ds or Fs on this component.
Board, could I have a motion to approve the cut scores as noted?
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Ramos Montini, other second.
No, I was waiting for you.
I'll second for discussion.
Seconded by trustee McMillan. Discussion. Yes.
First of all, I don't think we're trustees.
No.
I don't know.
I've been called worse.
Board of trustees are either MSU or U of M or something. Anyway. So I have, I mean, I would look to, this is another area where I don't know if 10%, I don't know, is this WIDA test considered high stakes? Do we consider it relatively useful? 10% or, you know, 11% not failing, you know? These percentages are pretty low. I don't know, not too excited about grading schools, as it begins with, from the state level, but I guess I just, I'd love to hear from Ramos Montini or somebody that would be a little bit more knowledgeable about these.
Well, this test, this test is the test that's used throughout the state to assess bilingual students. And it has been effective for placement, for finding out how much English they know, how much of the culture that they know, how can we assess all of that to be able to service them. So when I was teaching in bilingual ed, this was a test that was useful because a lot of the students didn't know any English, some knew a little bit, some had never gone to school before. But of course, they couldn't take it because they didn't know how to read and write. But the ones that did know some, you know, some English or none at all, so they gave us an indication where to start with them.
I had a question, too. So it says proficiency or adequate growth. So how much of this is growth and how much proficient?
So what this is looking for is a student, so to Lupe's point, the WIDA is given to any student who's an English learner. They either show that they're proficient on a given year in the WIDA, or they show that they're making growth toward that English language proficiency. It's our English language proficiency assessment. So this is the percent of students who either got to that proficient mark on the WIDA or showed growth toward that proficient mark. So if you have an English learner subgroup, and 60 to 100% of those students either were proficient or showed growth toward that English language proficiency, you would get an A.
Ms. Ramos Montini.
I was going to add that we administer the test before and after, so then we would see the growth.
Okay. And Dr. Kiesler, if you could remind the board, we reviewed this category, and the board in small groups suggested some amendments associated therewith. Tell us where we landed in the distribution with those amendments that were board suggested.
The board expressed interest and concern about, I think all the concerns have already been voiced here, about using tests to measure students' learning and progress and wanting to be fair to schools. So the changes had the impact of increasing the range of B schools likely and decreasing the number of C schools, and decreasing, shifted the distribution toward the A, B, C range a bit. So to have more, pick up more of the progress showed by schools with the grades in a more accessible way for schools.
Thank you. Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. There's a limited amount of years that a student may take the WIDA, correct?
Yes.
If you could kind of review that for us also.
Yes. They are required to take the WIDA until they are exited from their English learner status. Andy, are you back here? Tell me if I get anything wrong. So they're required to take it until they exit that English learner status, which is a combination of achieving proficiency on this and being exited by the district.
Okay, so the district in making that decision might have their own internal assessments, observations.
Yes.
So a student might take the WIDA once, one year, might take the WIDA three years, depending.
Yep.
Okay.
There's no limit, as in you've taken it five years, you have to stop. If you are still considered an English learner, then you still have to take it. In practice, people learn, acquire English, and eventually stop taking it, but we don't say you cannot take it any longer.
It takes like three to five years.
Yeah, I think this is.
Depending on the proficiency.
Right. And what we know is, is that English language learners' growth and development is not perfectly linear. You get a little bit of a swoop. That's exactly right. And it's hard to see that movement early on the tests. Later, it's more apparent. The growth shows itself in assessments later than it might with a non-English language learner. That's not unsurprising. It actually kind of mimics the growth that you see sometimes in K and 1 assessments, that you see flat early on these assessments and a sharper slope subsequently on the assessments. And that's kind of factored into this metric. Again, it's sort of the peril of putting labels on top of labels, isn't it? That the percentage of kids making progress is sufficient, and there ought to be some clarity associated with that. But remember, if I'm at a WIDA Level 1, all it means is that I just began to learn the language. It doesn't say anything about my learning ability. It doesn't say anything about my intelligence. If I put anyone in this room in a country in which you didn't know the language, you would struggle, without exception, without exception, however smart you may think you are. But to be dropped in a country where you don't know the language is a challenge. And it does take a number of years. And three to five, for some, would be the standard, some would argue five to seven. The later you come, paradoxically, the more years it takes you to get to proficiency, particularly if you come post puberty, because the literature is pretty clear that your linguistic ability, your sort of linguistic stickiness, if you will, your cognitive linguistic stickiness is greater when you're small than it is when you're younger. So my ability to learn French was greater when I was small than my ability would be if I went and tried to learn some other language at this advanced age. Okay? Other questions or thoughts? Yes, Mr. McMillan.
Just for clarity, for the public, make sure there's no misconception, and I know there is. But when Vanessa mentioned, like, the board wanted, I just, I'm very stickler on open meetings, Zach. We did not meet as a majority. We met, I don't know if you explained this before I arrived, but, you know, we met, you had small groups, you wanted feedback from us.
Right.
You know, nobody said, you know, I mean, there was no majority that said, yes, that's what we want.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to make it real clear that everything is, any decisions are being done out here in public.
That's right. Yeah, that's exactly right.
And I know there was no.
No, but the point still stands, that we shared with the board in publicly posted small group sessions, 1, 2, the board members provided feedback. That is not to say that the board as a whole voted in small group session. It's an important distinction. It needed to be mentioned.
And I just wanted to mention, so if Lupe is fine, and others aren't concerned about this, I'm fine with voting, yes, Ms. Pritchett.
Any, Dr. Pritchett?
It just occurred to me that this is the only subgroup that is called out in the legislation. And I always get concerned, because we know there are some schools with a large population of Yale learners. You may have 50 students taking the WIDA, and in another school, you may only have 31 taking the WIDA. So I guess I'm getting, again, ahead of myself. But I'm wondering if in the descriptor on this one, you know, describing for the reader or the individual looking at these scores, that there could be some indication, so, because the N becomes extremely important for something like this.
Yes, because the vast majority of the schools in the state are going to have an NA for this.
Correct, right.
That we have more than 3,000 schools in the state. Most of them are not going to test the requisite number of English learners in order to have this count. That's exactly right.
And I'm concerned that that's going to get misinterpreted. If, again, a school has tested 31 students, and another school, because they have more Yale learners, which is great, has tested 50, you get more variation because your N is larger.
You do.
Or smaller, depending on how you look at it. So I'm just, I'm thinking ahead to when this gets rolled out, that we're making it very clear to the public that each one of these has to be looked at in a certain way.
Fair enough. Okay. Anything else for the good of the group on this metric? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Dr. Kiesler.
Okay, moving to our second grade, 205.
Beg your pardon, I'm sorry. Do we have an abstention? Dr. Pugh abstained. I beg your pardon. Thank you.
Moving to our second grade graduation rate. This is the percent of students who are graduating. We use the best of the four-year, five-year, or six-year graduation rate. In practice, in Michigan, we track kids up through six years to graduate high school and consider it on-time graduation, because we have a number of policy levers that, you actually heard one earlier today, some of those students are, in this early middle college, are going to be in school for five years and come out with college credit and a high school diploma. So our grad rate accomplishes that. And so the school gets the credit for the best of their four, five, or six-year grad rate. If a school has between, graduates between 93 and 100% of its students, we are recommending an A. Between 85% and 93% of students, a B. 75 to 85% a C. 67% to 75% a D. And below 67% would be an F. And as we indicated, we appreciated the state board's input on this metric. We had a lot of good discussion in the small group, in the publicly posted small group sessions, that the department took into consideration as we show these recommended cut scores. And using these recommended cut scores, we see that there is a U-shaped distribution. So in other words, most schools get an A or a B and have those strong graduation rates. Very few receive Cs or Ds. And then about a quarter receive Fs due to significantly low graduation rates, below that 67% threshold. And that 67% threshold is the federally recognized Every Student Succeeds Act threshold of 60, that's the threshold there, that indicates that a school would be a comprehensive support and improvement school. So that number has an actual grounding in other programming we do, and we thought it made sense to keep that consistency.
So with that shared, if I could have a motion to approve the cut scores?
So moved.
So moved by board member Ramos Montini. A second?
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Pritchett. Discussion. Discussion. Okay, here, board member Tilly.
The numbers look pretty stringent. What's the percentages?
So about 65% would get a B or an A, and the majority of those would be As. About 10% get Cs or Ds, and then, like I said, about a quarter would still get Fs.
Okay. The-ish two-thirds As or Bs. Smaller percentage Cs or Ds. And then the F, which is associated with that 67% or greater line from ESSA. Yes, Ms. Vecchio.
If there's a lot of...
So, if there's a lot of mobility, how, so if kids are coming in and out in the schools, how is that accounted for and controlled?
So, students at the, student level are tracked throughout the data system, so if they move from this high school to this high school, they move their, they come out of this high school's grad rate, and they go into this high school's grad rate. So, in terms of, there's two aspects of this, right? One is, are you counting them at the right school, not the one where they just were, but the one where they are now?
Right.
That's fairly well handled, and this is a very audited number that schools pay a lot of attention to. The other part that's not as well picked up is when a student arrives in 11th grade in your school and doesn't have nearly enough credits. That's why we use the five and six-year grad rate. We know that's not a perfect solution, but if you can keep a child in school and, you know, working toward the diploma, that's important. But that's more, that's not a metric problem, that's a, kids earning credits in high school in situations that are challenging for them to do so problem, which is a different issue.
Other, other questions? Dr. Pritchett?
Grad rate does not take into effect GED, or does it?
Not.
So, if we have a student in 10th or 11th grade who drops out, and then, when they're 19 and a half, 20 years old, actually, take a GED and pass it, that does not get attributed back to the high school?
Does not. GED is not considered a graduation outcome under the graduation rate calculation, which was negotiated with the feds, now like 10 years ago, actually, probably, but...
So, there was a, there was a change in 2008, 2008 moving forward. There was a uniform calculation of graduation rates, because what we had across the country with different states calculating graduation rates in different ways, you couldn't compare them. And so, there's a uniform calculation for, for, five and six-year graduation rates. And so, it speaks to how do you treat students with GEDs. That's irrespective of whether you think that that ought to be the case.
Correct.
That's a different conversation. And there are those of us who think, particularly given the fact that the GED standard has risen, there, there are a number of us who, who argue that it ought to count. And, and at some point, the feds will get around to that. Ms. Vecchio.
So, the certificates of completion, those are not counted either? So, the ones that go on?
No, not a certificate of completion. Now, many of our students with disabilities get actual diplomas within the five or six-year rate. But yes, the students who graduate with a certificate of completion currently are not considered graduates.
Okay.
And this is something that Scott's been leading a good discussion on, whether or not we think that's appropriate in the future for Michigan.
I might add...
It's not counted as dropout, or, or...
Yeah, it's just a...
Nothing, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't count against you in terms of your dropout, but it doesn't count for you in terms of your grad rate.
Actually.
We're about to testify in 30 minutes, 40 minutes, in front of a Senate committee on a new Michigan merit curriculum bill. One of the elements of our testimony is that special needs children ought to be able to have a, an amended MMC diploma, and that it ought not simply to be a certificate of completion, but that you ought to be able to fully graduate with modifications that stem from your IEP, from your Legally Implemented IEP. That would be our recommendation, and we're, we're going to share that in 45 minutes. It's not to say that that's going to be decided in 45 minutes, but that's an important, that's an important change that needs to take place in the state. And we do have discretion over that in the state, or more to the point, the state legislature does. Other, Mr. McMillan?
If I vote on this, I'd like to know. So, a school that I'm going to agree to, that gets an F, does that necessarily mean that's a bad school? That is, well, yeah, bad. I mean, is, is failing the students? There's other reasons that they could, are there other reasons legitimately that they could get below a 67?
You want to leave? Yeah, please.
I mean, so, yes. And what, to Dr. Rice's point, we have yet to pull out the alternative ed high schools and the special ed centers, which are the, one of the big types of schools that receives a, has a low grad rate. And some of that is because, as Dr. Pritchett said, they may be getting students to GED. Special ed centers have a lot of students on certificate of completion. So, those are, I would say, legitimate reasons where the data doesn't pick up the fact that a school is getting a child to a good outcome for them. So, it's, in that sense, it's good that they don't get held accountable on this metric, because this metric is rough for schools that have large populations of students, where they're not going to graduate as we define it. Aside from those schools, are they bad? A lot of schools, a lot of students there are not graduating. Now, there can be a host of reasons that students aren't graduating, right? And it's not all about what the school is doing.
Right.
In fact, I would argue, probably a lot of the time, it's less about the school and more about the challenges that students facing in terms of getting to and completing.
I mean, one of the reasons the legislature wanted to do this was to inform parents. They thought this was a great way to inform them. They could be informing them incorrectly in this metric. They could, a parent could say, oh, this, this school doesn't care about graduation rates, look at this. No, it could be doing a tremendous job trying to get their kids to graduate, it's just there's other circumstances that are causing them to get an F. So, this is one of men, a myriad of reasons why I think this stuff, just, I just, the legislatures, I better not get into adjectives, but I mean, it's just really a problem, and they don't realize what they're doing. It's so, they have, they're such simple-minded in these areas often, and it really upsets me, so...
We may have, we may have steered into adjectives, but Ms. Tilly, and then Dr. Pew.
What would the ramifications be if we change, if we did an amendment to change the metrics to 90 to 100?
Ramifications associated therewith?
It increases the, it increases the number getting As, obviously, by about 10%.
So, before you gave us A and B, 65%, so what would that be for A and B?
It actually has the effect, it's still 65% across A and B, it just moves some out of the B category into the A category.
What about the Fs?
The F is the...
Would that affect the Fs?
Nope, unless we change the F cut score.
I mean, that's what I mean, the whole flow, change the whole cut score.
It doesn't. If we just change the cut score for A to 90 to 100, the other cuts remain the same. You'd have to change them each. Each of them are decision-making.
The F percentile is 10%.
10% increments all across.
Exactly. Thank you.
That would be a less gener...
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you were saying. Apologize.
Less Fs.
It reduces the number getting Fs by about 4%.
And then the total would still be like 21%ish?
Getting Fs, or just over 20%. I would submit to the board that making a change of that magnitude and breaking the tie to the federal system may not, it's not an impactful change, but will have a lot of implications for confusion for the field. Where 67% is bad in one system, and it's 60 here, and it didn't change your distribution all that much, just for consideration, think about that.
And I think part of the, part of the issue is, is that we own this at the end of March when we distribute it. And when it's substantially different, it is owned by you. That is to say, you own those distinctions, to the extent that you helped create those distinctions, to the help, to the extent that there was no ability but to have different systems, that's fine. But to the extent that you exacerbated distinctions between two systems, then I think you own that, and you need to consider that in your, in your deliberations. This wouldn't change the percentage of Fs very much at all, but it would create some measure of confusion where there was a difference between a so-called failing school and those not. Where this has particular impact is, in the federal system, you would end up being a CSI school. In the state system, you wouldn't necessarily be a comprehensive school improvement school. And so, you create, you could just create a really odd circumstance in the, in the field with individual schools. That's the only thing I think that Dr. Kiesler was trying to make you aware of. Other, other thoughts?
Oh, wait.
Yeah?
The CSI schools are based on the index system, right?
CSI schools are based on the index, yes. Do you want to share a little additionally?
No, I don't want to go into it. I'm just saying that would have nothing to do with whether we change this or not.
One of the triggers to be a CSI school is if you have a grad rate below 67%.
Oh, right, but I mean, if, in these grades, we said we changed it, that the school, the same school would still be a CSI school or not, based, whether we changed this or not.
They could potentially be CSI for grad rate below 67% and getting a D.
Right. Yeah, but I mean, it would be different. So, let's be clear about this. And, you know, and I would say also, Dr. Rice, that I understand that it's all about incentives, and so I don't want to make it light, you know, make light of the fact that maybe there are schools that aren't doing a good job getting their kids to graduate, and, you know, I don't want to be seen as saying, well, I'm, I'm going to give them a little bit, I don't want them to get an F, you know? That, it's just a bad, it's a bad metric overall for me, because, and, you know, I don't like kicking it to the department. You know, I like making decisions, and I understand that a decision because of state law has to be made. We can't say, you know, we forbid this one going on, the scorecard. So, you know, for me, and I don't like the idea of, you know, we have another month, you know, I'd almost, I'm tempted to say, to try to table it and move it to December, but I don't know that another month would get a better result, just because it's, it doesn't mean anything in many ways, just, you know, I mean, it's just a...
The raw, the raw number is the important thing. And the raw number is important and has been reported for years. The four-year rates, the five-year rates, and the six-year rates, if I could finish. The raw data is a part of your data dashboard. It's been a part of your parent dashboard. Federally reported, state-reported, recorded on websites, and so on and so forth. That's the important thing, for each individual parent to be able to look at those raw numbers. Not so much the label on top of the number, but rather the raw number. I agree that the label on top of is awkward. I do think that there's a value to publicly display graduation rates as you have them in the parent dashboard.
Yeah, and so, I, I was, you, you say that the raw data is important, but again, what we discussed here, a 66 may be of no fault, it may be a, a school that does tremendous work in getting their kids to graduate, but for no fault of their own, and so, actually, it is, it is a, it's a harm to label them an F, and even to get a 66. I mean, the raw score at that point, you know, if a parent is comparing, it could be misleading, is all I'm saying, even the raw score, even though it's important, it's to some degree important. So, I, as much as I don't want to kick anything to the department, I guess the only thing I'm left with is to, yeah, I mean, I don't want to, I, I'm not, I don't want my fingerprint on this at all, to be honest with you. I mean, to either say no or to abstain seems like the right one for me.
All right, fair enough. So, if I, if, hearing, any more conversation? Dr. Pew?
You know, I guess I'll, I'll just lay it here, why I've abstained, abstained from, and will continue to. I don't want to own any of this, you know? We all know that, I'm, I'm just going to put it out there. You know, the department is to be commended for trying to not rush something through that was rushed through at the 11th hour without, obviously without thought. We know this, because it's created two separate systems. For the department to try to engage the department, or the, the board, to keep us in tune with, with what you're doing, for all the work that Vanessa, that you're doing to try to, to make sense out of nonsense, that's, that's all to be commended. I just don't want my fingerprints on any of this. I mean, to me, this may be where you and I separate, but it, it perpetuates racism and classism. These numbers mean nothing. They're based on senseless measures that just should not, it's senseless to, to take measures and be, that, that just victimizes victims. When you talk about the graduation rates, and that's what I was talking about, if, if I were as a scientist, or researcher, or public health person, to just take some descriptive numbers and then base my decisions on that, I would be laughed at, and especially by the people who created this legislation that's driving this nonsense. It's just not good science. And when I look at public health, when I look at education and our children, those are some of the most critical areas where we cannot afford to just continue to be a part of the perpetuation of the nonsense and victimizing victims. And so, I just, I refuse to be a part of it. I don't want my name on it. I do understand the department and why you all are having to do what you're doing, and I, I don't criticize my board members for making sure that they have the back of the department. What you're doing here is not what has slowed down this process. You doing your due diligence is to be commended, because it was rushed through, and us having this conversation is not what is slowing down, what really shouldn't, shouldn't exist. But just wanted to get that out there.
Very much. Anything additionally before we, before we vote? Okay. Graduation rates, cut scores, as noted on the table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. One, all opposed. Abstentions?
I'm a abstain.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote, please. Marilyn?
Vecchio?
Abstain.
McMillan?
Abstain.
Pritchett?
Abstain.
Pew?
Abstain.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Abstain.
Tilly?
Abstain.
Albert Jefferson?
Very good.
One aye.
The, thank you very much. It is 11:40. We have just a few more minutes. Let's, let's just share, without vote, if we could, what we have in terms of recommendations on the next three categories. No vote, no discussion, given time constraints, if we could, and that permits the board to fully consider it in advance of the December board meeting. Okay? All right, very good. Dr. Kiesler?
So, moving on to grade three proficiency. You see the chart in front of you. This is another metric that we've had a good deal of discussion about, so at this time, these are the cut scores that we would recommend to the board. If between 55 and 100% of your students are proficient, you would receive an A. 40 to 55% a B. 23 to 40% a C. 10% to 23% a D. And if below 10% of your students are proficient, you would receive an F. Just a reminder that this combines math and ELA, that was a vote the board took at the October board meeting, and that the state average in general floats somewhere between 40 and 50%. And similar to the previous metric, the board provided significant feedback on, on the proficiency grade. When we use these cut scores, we would see that a little over half of schools are projected to receive an A or a B. About 25% receive a C, and the remaining 20% receive Ds or Fs. Dr. Rice, you want me to continue to the other ones?
Please, yeah.
Moving on to growth, and I know that this has been discussed already today, there has been substantial interest and discussion regarding the best ways to measure student growth at the student level, and then how to credit schools for the growth that students demonstrate on assessments, on state assessments. At this point, for the first year of A to F, we recommend that we use the current growth calculation, and concurrently, we will convene a stakeholder group to discuss the various options for modifying this metric in the future. We use the current metric, and now moving on to the cut scores. So, using the current way of measuring growth, which is, we look at the number of students, the percent of students in a school who demonstrate adequate growth, meaning they're growing toward proficiency. So, they're not just growing at all, they're growing enough that they will get to proficient, or if they are proficient, that they will stay proficient over time. Using that as the student-level metric, you count the number of students in a school who demonstrated the adequate growth, and then you divide by the total, you get a percent of students demonstrating adequate growth. The recommended cut scores at this point would be, if your school has between 55 and 100% of your students demonstrating adequate growth, you would get an A. 40 to 55% a B. 25 to 40% a C. 10 to 25% a D. And below 10% is an F. And you can see these cuts look similar to the proficiency cuts, because the distributions are similar, and the logic remains constant across both. If we use these cut scores, around 50% of schools would receive As and Bs on growth. Approximately a third would receive Cs, and the remaining 20% receiving Ds and Fs. Approximately a third would receive Cs, and the remaining 20% receiving Ds and Fs. Moving into our final metric, and Dr. Rice alluded to this earlier in the meeting, and we, this was another area where we've had very rich discussion around this comparison to similar schools. So what the law requires is that schools be graded on how well they do in proficiency compared to schools who look like them. So we've had a lot of discussion around how to match, what does it mean to look like each other as a school? And to be responsive to this feedback, the MDE proposes we change the matching methodology to be based 70% on the percent of students who receive free lunch, and that's free lunch, not economically disadvantaged. And again, we had a good discussion about that at the board table last month. 20% based on the percent of students with disabilities in the school, and then 10% on what's essentially school size, but is calculated as student FTE. So in other words, your similar schools would be those with similar percents, largely driven by the percent of free lunch, and then by how many students with disabilities you have, and then just by your size. Yes.
Quick question. I thought it was, I, I, I like this. I thought we had talked about 20%, the 20% would be with the FTEs.
It is, I apologize. I, that should say that. All right, thanks. And then, finally, so we do the match based on those three factors, we find your similar schools, and then you as a school are compared to, for the performance in that, in that group. And it, that is expressed as a Z-score. Z-scores range from 3, which means you're extremely above average, to negative 3, extremely below average, although in practice, most go from 1 to negative 1. If you have a 0, you're no different than the average in your group. So again, this metric is all about how well do you do in proficiency compared to schools that look just like you. So the cut scores here are, if you have a Z-score essentially of above .89, meaning you're above average, you would get an A. If you're .48 to .89, you would get a B. If you cross 0, so you see the C-range is from negative 1.5 to .48, so that means 0, that means you're right at the average, is in the middle of that band, you'd get a C, meaning you're right on kind of the average of the group. If you have a Z-score of .84 to .15, you would get a D, that should be point, negative 1.5, negative .15, I apologize. And then below negative .84, you would get an F. And using these cut scores, about 30% of schools receive As and Bs, about 30% receive a C, and the remaining 40% receive Ds and Fs.
The board there was conversation, you recall, about this particular way of comparing schools. And I think this metric, more than many of the metrics, is a little bit more comfortable for us as a, as a team, when you think about it, because we are comparing to the extent possible, likes to likes, similars to similars. So I think that there's some value to this. Of course, it turns on the formula, it turns on that pie, doesn't it? And so you suggested a greater percentage based on economic disadvantage. We incorporated that. You also suggested that a percentage be associated with percent of special needs children. We incorporated that. You now have a metric that's almost exclusively the one or the other, either economic disadvantage and substantial economic disadvantage and free lunch, or percent of students with disabilities. 90% of the comparison is driven by those two factors. Very different from the initial, in which student FTE was fully half of this, and percentage of special needs children was unnoted in it. You also may recall that economic disadvantage was ever so slightly differently defined. It was defined as free and reduced-price lunch-eligible, not simply, not free lunch-eligible. So you have a little bit greater severity of economic disadvantage that gets calculated within, within this. We think that these are good changes. Interestingly enough, they, they, they produce some pretty similar results, and so that has gotten us wondering about what gets captured in the student FTE metric. And so we're going to go back to some, some people that use that metric and kind of really flesh that through, to the extent that we, to the extent that we can. Questions on the rethinking of comparison to similar schools? Questions on that? Any thoughts associated therewith?
No, but, well, I didn't know, we didn't have that opportunity to have questions on the other two.
No, I beg your pardon.
So I know you're hurried, but I just wanted to say that the, I like the stakeholder group on the modifying the growth metric. What I want to make sure that is on the record from MDE is that, that we can change this. I don't want to come next year and they say, and hear that, "Well, things are, you know, it'd be too much of a seismic shift to change that." I mean, you, you really believe that there could be a change if, you know, the stakeholder group and this board thinks that it should be, the way we measure growth should be changed?
Yes.
Okay.
But I want to be clear, we're not going to have that conversation-
No, I know.
-in the fall.
I understand.
We're going to have that conversation January through April or May.
I'm a little more comfortable-
And rapid, yeah.
With that.
But yeah, and, and we are too. We think that there's some value to that conversation, probably long overdue, but it's going to be the next few months, so that we're able to get on a different timeframe moving forward. Yes. Other, other thoughts? I might add, I think a lot of this is, is flexible, particularly if we're prepared to reengage with the feds. To not reengage with the feds is to have two very, very different systems. And again, you can't have it both ways. You can't argue against A through F, because you don't think that there should be two very separate systems, and then create a second system that is very different from the first system. You have to choose. You can't, you can't get, you can't have both arguments at the, at the same time. So more on that to reflect upon. My only point is, there's been a wide level of discretion this go-round, and to your specific question, Mr. McMillan, we are happy in the next four months to engage in a significant conversation about how growth is calculated. Okay? All right. Any other benedictions for the good of the group? Ms. Tilly?
Going back to the high school graduation rates.
Yes.
And just thinking about, I mean, you guys have to comply, so it has to, it's law, so you have to do it. And we all know that there are factors that contribute.
Yes.
Can you add that on there? Can you add some of the factors?
Yes. And, and I think what we would like you to, to help us with is that, that caveat or that disclaimer at the end, that essentially helps contextualize these metrics, or individual metrics, as the case may be. We're happy to share with you a draft of that, get your feedback. Group, group editing is a little bit perilous, but we, we welcome it at least initially. So we do think that there's some value to that. That would help with the contextualization, assuming that people read those, those sorts of things. I know that there are some that do, many that don't. And quite frankly, I think for a lot of people, this is, the whole conversation around this topic is in the weeds for a lot of people. Yes, Dr. Pugh.
To Tiffany's point, and then you mentioning contextualization, can, do you see us doing more with the data? Maybe not we, but is there any way that more can be done with the data, other than a disclaimer? In that some, some, some more in-depth, robust statistical analysis can be done with this data? That will provide some, some actual, a real contextualization empirical?
I think, I think so, yes. I do think more can be done with the data. I think that there's, there's a lot of noise in the data. I think that, given the noise in the data, it leads to some challenging conclusions. I do think that there's good research on factors that drive higher student achievement or higher, higher numbers rather than lower. We have those, we have that research. I've encouraged our research partners from Michigan State and University of Michigan to help us create research briefs for our teachers, for our administrators in our local school districts, to help us understand those major factors. A number of us can share those verbally, but they'd be nice to have in single-page, double-page, out to the field with a lot of footnotes, so if you want to click on the study itself, see exactly what that study was, you can read it in its entirety.
Right, and we, we've all studied all of the data that exists, but if there's some primary data, something that we can contribute to the body of the science from our data that's beyond a disclaimer, that's-
No, I understand. It's, it's a good question. I think it's worth an effort. I don't know that our data, given some of the factors that exist uniquely in Michigan around school funding, and the adverse impact of school funding that isn't equitable. And so what you have is, school districts that have some of the greatest needs, receiving dollars which are the furthest away from those needs, and that obscures a lot of other things that are going on within the data.
And that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Can, can we run some data that shows that, that I'm able to see, like, what are some of the confounding factors that end up with this outcome? That, that's exactly-
Right. So, so it's a question that I've asked. I think that there's some value to it. I have some question about how muddy the data will be when we, when we do the regression analysis, but we're happy to, bless you, we're happy to work on it, and to involve you, if you'd like to be involved in it, because I think that would be helpful, to have a different set of eyes, a research set of eyes, albeit a research set of eyes coming at it from, from the healthcare profession, rather than necessarily from the education profession. Okay. Anything more? If not, we are adjourned until 1:00 PM. Thank you.